You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that are nice to meet. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one, heard around the world. Sherman marks for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
Thank everyone for coming tonight or watching us on TV. We ask that you stand for invocation, which is tonight going to be led by Hong Su Hong, a senior pastor at New Life Community Church. And if you'll remain standing for a pledge of allegiance, which tonight is going to be led by the Northwood Temple AP Government Class.
Will you bow down your head as I pray? Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you. On behalf of all who are gathered here today, thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we needed to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for fellowship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriately responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to live out in this country. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor. I pray for our various levels of city officers and in particular for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interest and issue of our times. I am asking that you would graciously grant them a sense of welfare and a true need of our people. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them a keen thirst for justice and righteousness. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them confidence in what is good and fitting. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give us assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and walk in and around our beloved city of Fayetteville. It is in your most blessed name, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible)
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 Thank you very much for coming tonight. We'll begin with item four, which is approval of tonight's agenda. Have several items there. Counsel, Mr. Hirsch?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I approve the, I moved to approve the agenda with the deletion of item 7.6 at the applicant's request in the consent agenda and that we move items 9.1, 9.2, and 9.3 ahead of 8.1 in the public hearing section.
All right, have a second, Mr. Hirsch. Any discussion of the motion? Let me ask for your vote, please. That's unanimous. We'll begin with tonight's announcements and recognition. We have several. First, want to make sure we call attention to Ms. Latimer, the teacher at Northwood Temple AP Government Class. Thank you all for being here tonight, sir, and the students. Councilmember Davies had the privilege of spending today with a Westover high school student. And Ms. Davey, would you share that with us?
(inaudible)
Hey, sir.
Hi, I'm Kirk Hilton, and I'm one of the sponsors for the group next to us here. You'll see some of the gentlemen that helped us put this together with Ms. Katie and Davey. First, before we start, I'd like to thank you and the council members. Also like to thank Dr. Till, Cumberland County Schools Superintendent and the Westover High School Principal and all the counselors from the high schools that participated in the program that helped us to put this together. Also like to spend some time to thank some of the sponsors. Commandant Sergeant Major Joe Dennison, retired. Colonel Tal Sullivan from U.S.A. J.U. from the Crane Association and from Glamour. Mr. Jeff Garfield, retired Colonel, is a friend of ours. And a friend of mine here, Anthony Wadi, that provided transportation for us today. And there's a list of other folks from, folks up in Washington, D.C. from the State Department and from Kentucky and so forth that participated in the program. Young lady here, really out of all the other candidates, came out to be the winner after seven hours of reviewing all applicants. She shined more than anyone else. It's an absolute pleasure. Today, we would like to present her with her award. And the entire concept of our program is the village concept, is that it takes the entire village, which is all of us here, to raise our children. And so, we see her as a part of our community and we see her as our child also. And so, with that, we'd like to present her with her award.
We'd like to present you your certificate of appreciation for being the scholarship winner along with your scholarship award and a medallion.
Thank you.
Give that to you. At this time, you could talk briefly.
Okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, other distinguished guests, family and friends. I am honored to be standing before you all today. I would not have imagined I would be standing in front of so many of the key leaders of Fayetteville. My name is Francesca Jasmine Duarica, and I am currently enrolled in Westover High School. I plan on attending East Carolina University, majoring in pre-med, in hopes of becoming an anesthesiologist. Today, while living the life as a council member for the day, I have learned many things. I would like to say thank you to everyone who has made this day possible. Not only am I going to take the knowledge that I've gained today and apply it to my everyday life, but I am more than excited to share this information with my family, friends, and peers. It has been a privilege for me to be nominated for the 2011 Village Scholarship Award. I first found out about this village scholarship when I was asked by one of my teachers if I was interested in applying. She told me that I had a short deadline to turn it in, in two days. I immediately took on the challenge and began to put my ideas on paper. I appreciate the time that everyone has given me to share my thoughts. I would like this opportunity to share a snippet of my essay. In my vision, I believe that if we create a place where children can come and participate in very, various activities of their choice, many kids will remain focused on the positive things in life rather than the negative. My ideas incorporate sports, arts and crafts, theater arts, chorus, dance, fitness, a community pool, and other activities. An individual joining a club or an art that is best suited for them will enable them to pass the time while doing something enjoyable. This place that I envision will be something like a recreation center but geared towards the entire community. This place will be something like a recreation center where the children of our community can come and eat free and also a place where people can donate canned foods and clothing for these children. In America, there are a lot of people who've been affected by natural disasters and tornadoes. In bigger states where poverty is expected, such as New York and California, they have many different alternatives for coming to the aid of the needy. However, in states such as North Carolina, there are not as many things available. There is a food stamp program in place that is available to lower-income families, yet the cheese, milk, and eggs provided have a distribution limit. As a community recreation center, we need to remember that the main people being affected by this are the children. Some children get their only meal at school, and after that, they do not eat again. Imagine the weekends where the child is given a portion of food because they have to share the meals with their brothers and sisters. I feel that we need to come up with a solution to this problem. I'm not only the captain of the auxiliary dance team at Westover High School, but I am also an active member in the band. I have heard from my fellow dancers comments such as, "Now that football season's over, I really miss dancing. I wish there was a place that we can all go and just dance." And I have often said the same. I do believe that we need to create a place where people can hang out and do something that they love to do, yet not, I do not have the knowledge of how to do. So, I have also ran and participated in many of our charity events and fundraisers. These charity events and fundraisers consist of blood drives raising money for the Juvenile Diabetes Research Fund, canned food drives for shelters, and more. As the National Honor Society Vice President, I've participated in daily recycling at Westover High School, which leads to garbage and more reusable paper, which leads to less garbage and more reusable paper. This will encourage children to stay active in life and keep them on the path to success. The idea of the recreation center will not only be made for the ideas we have now, but in addition, the ideas to come. It will be able to grow with this growing population. This will be a fresh start for Fayetteville, North Carolina, and an asset to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you. (applause)
I would like to thank the timeout for Ms. Newitt. Ms. Newitt, can you please stand? She is my guidance counselor at Westover High School, and she has been mentoring me on my path to success in high school. Thank you.[1182.01][1182.01](applause) I would also like to thank my family. If you all can please stand. My mother and father, Maria and Frederick Duarica, my sisters, Alisa, Tiffany, and Michael. You can't stand.[1198.58][1198.58](applause) Last, but definitely not least, I would like to thank Ms. Davey. Ms. Davey, can you please come forward? Thank you for the opportunity, for a day in being a council member. It was a very well and valuable experience that I will keep for the rest of my life. Thank you. You're welcome.[1229.58][1229.58](applause)
Thank you.
Thank you.
The city's Human Resource Development Department was recently recognized by the National Association for Government Training and Development. Mr. Coos, our Human Resource Director, will make that presentation.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor, City Council Members and viewing audiences. As the Director of the city's Human Resources Department, I'm pleased to have this opportunity to share some great news with you tonight, our employees, and with our citizens. As part of that great news, I'd like to call upon Ade Lewis, Assistant Director for Organizational Development and Training, our O-D and T team, to join me at the podium along with City Manager Dale Eymann. First, let me thank and acknowledge our city manager for his support, leadership, and participation in many human resources programs, ranging from employee appreciation to team building, while being a true advocate of employee development as our city manager. Thank you, Dale.
Thank you, John.
Ade Lewis is a special champion for continuous lifelong learning, and as our O-D and T leader, she role models our core values of respect through her actions and her contributions. In particular, Ade's teamwork and entrepreneurial spirit are two good reasons why we stand before you here tonight to share a special achievement award we recently received. So, with special thanks and appreciation for Ade's personal initiative to seek out, to share, and to leverage best practices with other HR professionals, I am pleased to inform you that the National Association of Government Training and Development has announced our Supervisory Operational Skills Program as their prestigious 2011 Program of the Year at their November 30th annual meeting, following Ade's submission of a 500-word statement describing this program and its benefits as required to compete for this award. Now, Ade is a very humble professional who thrives on recognizing others, so please allow me to read the commemorative plaque recognizing her leadership and this honor. The plaque reads, "The National Association for Government Training and Development, 2011 Program of the Year Award to the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, for our Supervisory Operational Skills SOS Training Program, signed by Cheryl Tinsley, Association President."[1407.42][1407.42](applause) Now, our next, and Ade, please proudly display that plaque in our HRD training room to inspire all future SOS participants and instructors for years to come. I also want to quickly recognize our instructors who helped make this program successful. We have, and Ade will help me with this, we have a couple of them here tonight, if they would kindly come forward.
We also have Luis Coloso, but he's not here right now.
Luis did have a death in his family, and we are thinking of him and his family, and we appreciate all his efforts. I ask you to please join me in applauding Ade and the team for making this program so successful. It's quite an honor and an award. And also, to please join me in applauding the more than 30 graduates across all city departments who have participated in this eight-week program. Thank you.[1529.15][1529.15](applause)
Okay, for our next presentation to the Partnership for Children, I ask Councilmember Val Applewhite to join us up front, along with President Eva Hansen, Board Chair Jeff Hyland, and John Frudenberg, the Government and Military Affairs Liaison. If you'll join us at the podium as well. And while we're doing that, Mayor Pro Tim Arp will share a proclamation with you.
Whereas the North Carolina Center for Nonprofits has recognized the Partnership for Children of Cumberland County as recipient of the 2011 Nonprofit Sector Stewardship Award for modeling exemplary nonprofit stewardship of the public's trust and support. And whereas the Partnership for Children Smart Start Initiative and the North Carolina Pre-Kindergarten Program have led to increased opportunities for our children, our future leaders, to be more successful in school and throughout their lives, assuring a more prosperous future for us all. And whereas another partnership for children's focus is family support, as parents are at the nucleus of thriving families and families are at the heart of prospering communities. And whereas we recognize and applaud the efforts of the Partnership for Children in working with the city of Fayetteville, resulting in a clear and consistent guidelines for childcare zoning, creating a model for early care and education policy which impacts the workforce of today while growing the workforce of tomorrow. Now, therefore, I, Anthony G. Shavoni, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby congratulate the Partnership for Children of Cumberland County on being awarded this outstanding honor and recognize its important role in ensuring that all children have the opportunity to succeed in school and be prepared to contribute to our social and economic future.[1653.01][1653.01](applause)
Mayor Shavoni and council members, I want to just take a brief moment to say thank you for this recognition. At the partnership, in our name, it says partnership, and we realize that this recognition is a lot to do with leadership, and we have great leadership in Eva Hansen, and I'm sure you're all aware of that. But we also thank you for being a great partner. We have had great support from the city and from the council members, and we couldn't do it alone. We are here to take care of early education in children and families, and we believe that you are a complete partner in that every day, so we thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council one, last resolution with regret. As you noticed, last week, we lost a good friend of this city and a previous city councilman and mayor, Charles Holt, and would like to enter the following resolution for action tonight. Whereas in the providence of God, he has brought to a close the life of former mayor Charles Holt, and we therefore offer this special tribute to the virtues and graces of his honor and value. And whereas Charles Holt began public service to the citizens of Fayetteville as a city council member in 1963. And whereas Charles Holt was elected to a second term in 1965 and to a third term in 1967. And whereas Charles Holt admirally served as mayor of our great city for one term from 1969 to 1971. And whereas Charles Holt stated on May 8th, 1969, following his election as mayor, "Government is broken down basically into individuals. Now as never before, American cities need personal qualities of strong democratic leadership. In most of these cities, the mayor and the city council will have this responsibility." And whereas Charles Holt, on April 27th, 1971, during his last city council meeting, expressed his pleasure for the opportunity of serving the city and community for eight years on city council and especially for two years as mayor. And whereas Charles Holt spearheaded fundraising for the Airborne and Special Operations Museum, which opened in downtown in 2000, paving the way for downtown revitalization. And whereas Charles Holt- And whereas Charles Holt also served on the Committee for the Cape Fear Valley Diabetes and Doctrine Center and on the Board of Directors of the North Carolina Nature Conservancy. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and the city council of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina. In his death, the City of Fayetteville has lost one of its great leaders who moved our city forward. His dedication to Fayetteville was noble and very much appreciated. His hard work produced many accomplishments which made Fayetteville a better place in 2011. His loss we deplore, his memory we cherish, and his priceless example we strive to follow. Therefore, be it further resolved, we tender our heartfelt symphonies to the bereaved family, his wife Peggy, their two daughters Sarah and Hannah, his two brothers Henry and William, and three grandchildren, great-grandchildren, adopted this 12th day of December 2011. I'd like to enter that officially in the record, ask for a second on that, council. Thank you for your time. Any discussion? Last few votes, please. Let there be unanimous. Ms. Clark, thank you so much. Okay, council, we'll move now to tonight's public forum. Let me read you the directions for the public forum. As you know, it's designed to invite citizen input and discussion. The forum shall last no longer than 15 minutes, and each speaker will have up to two minutes to address council on issues related to the City of Fayetteville. When you see the light located on the podium change from green to yellow, that means there's approximately 30 seconds left, and when you see the timer located on the podium change from yellow to red, that means the full two minutes has expired. We ask that when you come to the podium, you begin by stating your name clearly for the record, and your name and address, as a matter of fact. So ma'am, we'll begin the public forum.
I thought, Mr. Mayor, I thought we put nine, we moved nine, nine, one, two, three, and four.
After consent.
Mayor, our first speaker tonight for the public forum is Ms. Mildred Allen.
Just call that name one more time, ma'am.
Ms. Mildred Allen.
Ms. Allen? Okay, ma'am.
Our second speaker is Mr. Roosevelt Oden, and Mr. Roosevelt has brought some flyers here.
My topic that I wanted to speak on, I wanted to continue where I brought up last month about a disability center here in Fayetteville. But first, I brought a printout that talks about a deaf culture event that's coming up. I gave it to the clerk to pass out to the panel. It's next month, on January 18th, at 6 o'clock, 6 to 8, here in Fayetteville. You can take a look at the flyer that I've given out. And Jeff Greer from the regional center will be coming. He's a wonderful speaker, and I encourage you all to come and learn about why we really want to set up a regional center here in Fayetteville for our deaf. And he explains deaf culture very, very clearly. He's an individual himself who can hear, but he knows a lot about deaf culture. Next, I wanted to let you know that I'm working on next month, after the deaf culture presentation, I'd like to ask Pamela if I could put within the agenda the possibility of maybe 10-minute speak to talk about having some other deaf individual come in, to talk about the Roweston County Commission, and Lee County, and Hoke County, all the other different counties in the area. I'd love to have them come to support the establishment of the regional center and explain why it's so necessary. And then, after that, I'd like to work with the legislature to support an ongoing, hopefully setup of a deaf regional center here in Fayetteville. And so if Pamela could give those out, she could give it to you, and you can take a look at it, and you can maybe hopefully attend the deaf culture meeting next month. It's really enjoyable and very educational. Okay. And so I'd like to come again and speak a little more next time, maybe. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, sir.
Our next speaker is Ms. Chance.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Chance, and I'm at 1209 Elliott Circle here in Fayetteville, North Carolina. Good evening, Mayor Shavoni and city council members. As you know, there have been several cuts to the education system this year. The cuts have affected some schools more than others. Well, there's a little school on 800 North Street here in Fayetteville, North Carolina that has been affected drastically. That school is Teresa C. Barron Elementary School. Teresa C. Barron Elementary School is a school with 98% Afro-American. Also at this school, 98% of the students receive free or reduced lunch. Funding is very limited at this school, especially in the area of technology. We have a strong PTA, however, our parents give what they can to the PTA. So far, the parents at Teresa C. Barron Elementary School have raised nearly $4,000, selling raffle tickets for $1. However, this is still not enough for what we need. Therefore, I'm here tonight to solicit funding to upgrade the computers at Teresa C. Barron Elementary School. The current computers are discarded from Jack Britt High School that were donated seven years ago. Some of them contain floppy disk drive compartments. Teresa C. Barron has been recently labeled a school of technology. However, our current technology does not reflect this label. We are in desperate need of new computers. Other schools such as New Century and W.T. Brown have labs with flat screens, monitors, and brand-new hardware. If our students are to compete in this technology-driven world, we have to have an upgrade. Please help us. We're even willing to put your names on a plaque to recognize each individual who give to the cause. Teresa C. Barron Elementary School is a school with a vision. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for coming.
Our next speaker for public forum is Ms. Sorrento.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. Ms. Sorrento was our final speaker for public forum.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll close the public forum and thank everyone for coming tonight. Council will now move to item 7.0, which is tonight's consent agenda. Mr. Massey?
I would like to pull item 7.4.
Okay. Can we take that in the form of a motion with the exception of 7.4, sir?
Yeah, make a motion to approve all items except for 7.4.
Is there a second to that? Thank you, Mr. Hurst. Any discussion? May I ask you a vote on that motion, please? That's unanimous, and we'll move now to item 7.4.
Evening, Mayor and council. Item 7.4 is case in our P. 1159F. It's a property located at 4820 Rose Hill Road. It's currently zoned, a single-family six. The requested action, or the application was to go to an NC neighborhood commercial. You'll see through the presentation that the zoning commission and staff have actually recommended the O&amp;I Office and Institutional District for this property instead. You can see here on the map where this property is located, here in red, there is other office and institutional zoning across Rose Hill Road. This is, gives you kind of a perspective. Here's Bluff Street and Needham Drive. It's kind of in between those and on the opposite side of the street, just to give an idea. There is other SF6 zoning to the east, or to the west, and then SF10 to the east of the property. Current land use in the area, you do have the O&amp;I commercial across the street. This property had been the Westover Area Volunteer Fire Station. When the city annexed this area, the need for volunteer fire station was no more since city fire service took over, and since there is also already a city fire station in that area, the city did not need to take over the station. At this point, the West Area Volunteer Fire Department is looking to sell this property to get it off of their records, and of course, with that sale, that would then make this a taxable property again. The land use plan does call for a single-family or low-density residential throughout this area of Rose Hill Road. Again, as I said a while ago, though, the zoning commission and staff had recommended a less, approval of a lesser O&amp;I district based on the previous use of the property and that existing building that's on the property. Are there any questions of staff at this point?
The question was whether or not the previous owners were satisfied with the change of the designation to O&amp;I.
They are, and actually, their representative, Mr. Steve Blanchard, is here in the audience tonight, if you wanted to officially ask him that, but would you like to?
I trust you.
Okay.
Mr. Chris?
My question was answered, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Massey?
I would like to make a motion that the council go on record as approving the O&amp;I designation for this location.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Hurst. Have a motion, an appropriate second, any discussion of the motion? After your vote, please. That is unanimous. Thank you. Move now to item 9.1, which is Presentation of the Audited 2010/2011 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Ms. Smith, thank you for being here again tonight, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. It is my pleasure to present to you the City of Fayetteville Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2011. This report is commonly referred to as a CAFER. This report includes all the funds of the city, including the utility funds managed by the City's Public Works Commission, and I believe all of you have received at this point your financial report. Throughout the presentation, I will refer you to pages in the financial statements. However, the slides will contain a summary of the information, so it will not be necessary for you to flip to each page in the financial report. First, I would like to cover the auditor reports issued for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2011. Generally accepted auditing standards require that the auditor provide an opinion on which the financial statements are presented fairly or not. In our case, we did present them fairly, and the city's audit firm, Cherry Beckett &amp; Holland, issued an unqualified or clean opinion on the city's financial statements. This is the highest level of assurance that a certified public accountant can give. This report and opinion can be found on page B1 of the city's audited financial report. When performing an audit of the governmental entity, an additional set of auditing standards must be applied. These additional standards require that the auditor issue a statement on compliance and internal controls over financial reporting. The purpose of this report is to describe the auditor's scope of testing of internal controls over financial reporting and compliance and the results of that testing, and not to provide an opinion on the internal control over financial reporting or on compliance. This report can be found on page Q1 of the financial report. Under the requirements of the Office and Management and Budget Circular A133, which is a federal regulation, the auditor performed a single audit of federal and state grant expenditures totaling over $33 million. Under the single audit, the auditor is required to express an opinion on whether the government complied with laws, regulations, and provisions of contracts or grant agreements that could have a direct and material effect on each major federal and state program. The city's audit firm issued an unqualified opinion or clean opinion, and these reports can be found on pages Q3 through Q6 of the financial report. In addition to the comprehensive annual financial report, you were provided with one letter. That letter is known as the Statement of Auditing Standards 114 Letter. This letter is required by auditing standards generally accepted in the United States and discusses the audit firm's independence, the significant accounting policies, and accounting estimates of the city. I would encourage you to review this letter at your convenience. This slide will be focusing on the general fund. Since the general fund is the major governmental fund of the city, my presentation will focus on the key financial results for that fund. This information is included in the fund financial statements of the CAFER. A summary of the information provided on page E5 of the CAFER is included on this slide. This slide shows the original budget in that first column there. In the second column, you have the final budget. In the third column, you have the actuals achieved by the city, and in the fourth column, you have the variance between the final budget and the actual balances for each of the major categories of the income statement. As you can see, the city's revenues and other financing sources exceeded the city's expenditures and other financing uses by approximately $2.1 million for the fiscal year, resulting in a ending fund balance at the end of the year of $48.7 million for the general fund. Now that represents all categories of fund balance. This slide shows the original budget, final budget, actual balances, and the variance between the final budget and actual revenues for the city's general fund by each of those major categories listed before you. As you can see, revenues and other financing sources for the general fund were $7.5 million less than the final budget. That variance is primarily attributed to permit and fee revenues exceeding budget by .6 million, and that is in the third row under permits and fees. If you look at the far right-hand column, you can see that. And intergovernmental revenues exceeded budget by about $1.9 million, and that is in the second line. This increase in intergovernmental revenues was primarily due to sales tax, utility franchise tax, and power bill revenues. These increases were offset by a $9.8 million fund balance appropriation from fund balance. This is, in essence, our savings account. This is a budgeted funding source to balance the budget, but however, it's never reflected as an inflow of revenue in the year in which you appropriate it. It's really money coming from your savings account, and that is why we had a variance of $7.5 million in revenue and funding sources. This slide shows the original budget, the final budget, and the actuals for expenditures, and the variance between the final budget and actual expenditures for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2011. As reflected on this schedule, expenditures and other financing uses for the general fund were $9.6 million less than the final budget. This variance is primarily related to approximately $3.7 million in budgeted expenditures that were unspent, were restricted, or assigned at June 30, 2011, to be re-appropriated in the current fiscal year, in fiscal year 2012, and you have already re-appropriated those funds. Why did we restrict or assign those funds? Examples include funding for purchase orders for vehicles, equipment, supplies, and services. So for example, if we had a garbage truck that we had ordered before June 30 but had not received it, we don't record that as an expenditure. However, we do set that aside in fund balance, knowing that we'll have to pay that bill when it comes due in the following fiscal year. So that's a good example of why we reserve funds at June 30. We also had some funds assigned for items that you may recall, such as in-car cameras for police vehicles. So that represents an example of an assignment of fund balance at June 30, and pavement study, for example, as well. In addition to that, personnel costs across all departments were $1.2 million less than budgeted amount. In addition, operating expenditures other than personnel costs were under budget by approximately $1.3 million. And then finally, we retained about $3.4 million in the budget beyond our expenditure projections to ensure that we had sufficient funding for any unanticipated expenditures at year-end. As you recall, we did have ongoing activities related with the tornado cleanup around that This slide contains the components This slide contains the components of the $48.7 million fund balance that I referred to earlier for the general fund at June 30. And this information is reported on page E1 of the comprehensive annual financial report. As you may recall, changes in the accounting standards require the city and other local governments to adopt new classifications for fund balance. Those categories now consist of unspendable fund balance, and you can see that in the first row there. And our unspendable fund balance really represents inventories, supplies, trash carts, things like that, that we have on hand that's not spendable. But that is a part of our fund balance. Restricted fund balances are those that are mandated for specific purposes by external parties or by legislation. In our case, this category includes funds committed for contracts and purchase orders, as well as funds restricted, for example, for county recreation. As you know, we are funded by the county for their recreation programs. If they have any unspent funds at June 30, we reserve those in fund balance and set them apart from ours, so you can see distinctly what belongs to the city. Committed fund balance and assigned fund balance are other categories that are now classified within fund balance. And assigned fund balance in the general fund includes funds assigned for subsequent years expenditures. For example, when you adopted the budget for the new year, you adopted, I think, a fund balance appropriation in excess of $4 million. That shows up in the category as assigned for subsequent years expenditures, because you've committed those funds for this year's budget. There are also assignments for capital projects consistent with our capital improvement plan and other purposes. And then the final category is unassigned fund balance. This fund balance represents the funds that have not been classified in any of the other categories and are available for appropriation by the governing body. Approximately $16.8 million of the city's general fund fund balance is unassigned. This balance, as a percentage of fiscal year, actual expenditures and transfers out for June 30, 2011, is just under 12.5 percent. As you may recall, council adopted a minimum fund balance policy for the general fund, whereby the unassigned fund balance should be maintained at a minimum of 10 percent. It is important to maintain enough fund balance to meet short-term operating needs, unforeseen emergencies, and strategic initiatives of the city, and we have achieved this policy requirement for this period. In conclusion, I'd like to thank the staff members in the finance department, and Elizabeth Summer and Dyken particularly, for their role in completing a successful audit process in preparation of the comprehensive annual financial report. This is actually the second year the report has been completely prepared in-house by our staff, and of that, I'm very proud. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have, and would respectfully request that at the conclusion of this item, that if you wish to, that council accept the comprehensive annual report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2011. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for a great report. Any question from council? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Lisa, for your report. You stated that there was a $33.0 million. Is that over? Well, maybe...
Those are expenditures, actually, that we incurred in fiscal year 2011. It's not grant awards, but it's the expenditure of those award funds.
Then, did you say within your report, can we forecast what grants we're going to receive? I mean, the amount of grants we're going to receive this go-round?
Well, some of them are certainly recurring. For example, Transit has operating grants that they receive for capital assistance every year for maintaining the bus system, for maintenance on the vehicles and so what. Those funds are generally fairly predictable. Certainly, we are in new times right now, so I don't want to speak to what the federal government may do with our funding sources. But generally, those funds are recurring.
I'm asking this about the grant funding. A few years ago, we were talking about, or what's it been, last year, we were talking about there would be a possibility of some type of funding for some of our catalyst sites within the Marching Row Court. And due to some issues that we had, like, you know, the capital, and I think we talked about festival parks, that that funding, we may not get that funding, or that funding would be less. I think it was something like $108 or something.
That was CBDG money, I believe.
Right. CBW.
And those are for specific projects. In terms of what you can count on recurring funding for are really just the traditional CDPG and home programs. The airport receives significant contributions for their capital projects every year. Transit, as I mentioned before. The police department gets grants from time to time, and the fire department. Those are the ones you traditionally can count on receiving some type of funding. I'm not in a position to really speculate what we'll be receiving in the future. But then, some of the other projects we get are very specific and one-time funding.
Mr. Mayor, I believe Mr. Sharp has actually come into the next work session to, on the CBDG fund. I think I saw that on a future agenda, so that would probably, we'll get some more detailed information then.
Oh, I thought I had turned that on.
Any other questions for Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Okay. Could entertain a motion to accept? Mr. Hurst?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. No, I move to accept the audited fiscal year 2010-2011 CAFER report.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. Any discussion on the motion? Let me ask for your vote, please. Okay, ma'am, thank you very much for your hard work. That was a great report.
Thank you.
That's unanimous. Ms. Clerk? And just for information, the reason that we moved 9.1, 9.2, and 9.3 slightly ahead in the agenda, our meeting, I guess, a couple of weeks ago, we were here for six hours and 15 minutes, and these people stayed till the end, and we had to ultimately not get to those items. So we thought it might be nice to let them go first tonight. So thank you for allowing us to shuffle that around a little bit. And let's move to 9.2. Mr. Maples?
Mayor and council members, item 9.2 is the construction permit fee adjustments. I'm going to give a very brief summary and introduction and allow Mr. Maples, who did the hard work placing this together, give you a more detailed presentation. But we heard from our customers that our fee schedule that was adopted this year was a little complicated, and that we perhaps have not been quite as revenue-neutral for electrical trade permits as we had promised we would be. And as a result, we needed to make some adjustments that I think you'll be pleased to see. In addition, I just want to mention that, in addition to the construction permit fees, we also have an additional fee that was left out inadvertently in the adoption of the fee schedule, and that is for violations for junkyards and salvage yards. I'll turn it over to Mr. Maples and allow him to make the presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name, as you heard, was Doug Maples. I'm the Building Plan Review and Inspection Manager for the city. Tonight, for your consideration, is a recommendation on how construction fees are to be administered. During the meeting with the Home Builders Association's Government Relations Committee in March of 2011, the city staff tried to respond to some of the concerns contractors had with obtaining permits. Some contractors estimated their permit costs based off a square footage of the building to determine their cost to their contractors. Yet, the city required them to itemize each fixture or electrical outlet. The city looked for ways to simplify this permitting process. The new process would allow anyone to calculate their own fees without having to wait for the city to calculate those fees. Development Service staff had discussions with several contractors regarding this present fee structure and the new proposal. In addition, the director met with the home builders in a focus group regarding this item and further research of many different jurisdictions on how they did their fees. The Home Builders Association was very pleased with this and approved this process. The premise used to develop these new fees has two parts to it. First, make it simple. Rather than calculate multiple values for construction using trade estimates, then determining the fee using another factor, we recommend moving to a per-square-foot charge. The charge for all trades for a new construction project is recommended to be 54 cents, which is easily calculated by staff and customers alike. Secondly, the 54 cents per square foot covers all trades, including the building permit itself. A fee would be paid at the time of building permit issuance. Each trade would still need to obtain their own permits, but without a fee associated. After further research, staff decided to use one fee for all types of construction when new square footage was added. Renovations would be either 60 percent of the major, for major renovations, or 40 percent of that permit fee. This slide is an example of an average square-foot residential home fee using the new proposed fee process highlighted in the blue column. There is a slight increase in the example, but the overall range of the permit situation that would be permitted, these fees would generally even out, making them essentially I would be happy to answer any questions you have and would respectfully ask you pass this item.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for being here tonight. Council, you've heard the presentation. Do we have any questions? Okay. Hearing none, entertain a motion. Mr. Hurst?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Scott, Doug, thank you very much. I think the citizens appreciate, in the building trade, appreciates the simplification of the fee schedule. So with that, I move to adopt the recommended adjustments to the fee schedule.
Okay. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. Any discussion on the motion? Let me ask for your vote, please. That's unanimous. Thank you. We'll move now to item 9.3, concerning uninhabitable structures demolition recommendations. Mrs. Watson, thanks for being here, sir.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, before you, as a staff request for adoption of demolition ordinances for four buildings determined to be dangerous or blight, staff has complied with all statutory requirements in determining that these buildings are dangerous or blight. All statutory process of service requirements relating to the issuance of notices have been met. None of these properties are eligible for the city's acquisition/demolition program. The letter advising that their building would be presented to City Council for approval of a demolition ordinance was mailed to each of the property owners. First property is 1103 Bunce Road. And it's located in Dunkirk Heights. It's on Bunce Road, and it's between Frederick Road and Wilson Avenue. The building is blighted. There's not a historical, it's not a historic property. It's a vacant house residential zone. Utilities were disconnected as of February 18, 2009. In the last 24 months, we've had three calls for 9/11 service and four code violations. There are no city assessments. There's no outstanding taxes, and the low bid for demolition cost was $3,000. This property was not eligible for the acquisition/demolition program. And this is the first photo. It's, structures a duplex. This is around to the back side of the property. This is the other side, or you can see where it's all boarded up. And it's the other side of the other duplex, little graffiti on it. And we also have some broken windows. The next property is 606 Mechanic Street.
Sir, why don't we stay on that one for a second? Is that the one that the owners had some interest in, Miss Applewood?
Yes, yes, sir. I did have...
Stay on that while we're on this one.
Yeah. If you could, sir, I have a couple of questions, because during our agenda session, we had concerns about how long owners are allowed to take to rehab a property.
Well, I plan on addressing that at the end of this presentation, but what I've, what we've put together is some conditions that are going to, for the ordinance itself. And if you like, I can address those now.
Are we going to make one motion for all four properties at the same time? Are we going to make separate motions after you do your presentation?
I think we'll make those separate. Two of the properties, we believe, the owners have interest in still repair, and this is
606 Mechanic Street. And that property, this property is located, it's off of Ramsey. The street is between Chance and Webb Street. It's a blighted property, no historical value. It's vacant house residential zone. Utilities were disconnected as of June 1, 2010. There have been no calls for 9/11 service and one code violation in the last 24 months. No outstanding city assessments, no outstanding taxes. The low bid for demolition cost is $1,400. This property was not eligible for acquisition/demolition program. We didn't get a response from the owners, and apparently, this is our own property. This is a picture of the, I believe it's the front of the house. It's along the side here. It's along the other side, and we've had a problem with keeping this place secured. And this is the back, and then you can see there's, there's an opened window that's been knocked out. And right next door to this property, and it's owned by the same heirs, is 608 Mechanic And it's located in the same area. Blighted building, fire-damaged structure, though, on March 25, 2011. It's not a historic property. It's vacant house residential zone. Utilities were disconnected as of October 15, 2010. This property here, we've had 18 calls for 9/11 service in the last two years and three code violations. There is $645.08 city assessments for lot cleaning and securing of the building. No outstanding taxes, low bid for demolition cost $1,400. And this was not eligible for acquisition/demolition program, and we had no response from the owners. And this is the front of the house, and you can see the fire damage. It's along the side, rear of the, rear yard, and on the other side of the building. And we tried to get one good picture of the inside through one of the open windows, and you can see a little bit of the fire damage there. Our next property is 6526 Portsmouth Drive. That's located in the Glenbrook area between Bunce Road and Vermont Street. This one here is a dangerous building. It was fire-damaged structure December 24, 2010. It's not a historic property, vacant house residential zone. Utilities were disconnected on December 28, 2010. This property, 21 calls for 9/11 service and two code violations last 24 months. There's no city assessments. We do have $946.35 outstanding taxes. Low bid demolition cost is $1,800. And this property was not eligible for acquisition/demolition program. And this is just picture of the carport area. See a little bit of fire damage at the top of the roof here. And this is in the back, and you can see the damage in the roof, and then the fire damage from that one room. And I really don't know what this is. I guess they've tried to make some... I, I guess they, they've tried to make some, a quick fix on this, but that's basically where we're at, by the time we finished it. Well, this right here shows a, a crack in the, in the wall. This is in the rear wall. Now, we did come into, the property owner did make contact with us, and just before our, the last regular council meeting, they made some quick, a quick fix on the roof. It doesn't, laid some tar paper down, it doesn't meet, meet code, and at the time, they did try to get a permit, but we do have a policy of not issuing building permits when blighted, dangerous buildings are, are placed on the council agenda. They did seal up this back window here, and did a little bit of work on the roof there, and sealed up another, that one window that I showed you in the earlier picture that was defective. They just boarded that one up. Now-
You want us to put that on the slide?
The property owners of the two properties at eleven oh three Bunce Road and sixty-five twenty-six Portsmouth Drive have requested additional time to repair their structures. City council did express a concern that such requests may simply be delaying tactics. To avoid this concern, staff have provided the following proposed language to the respective We've added language to the demolition ordinances that this concern by establishing strict guidelines, and if these deadlines are not met, staff will proceed with demolition. And I think we've also provided you a hard copy of this also. The first deadline that these, that these folks would have, demolition ordinance, should this council choose so, is within thirty days after the demolition ordinance is adopted, they have to apply for building and techn, technical permits. Within five days after the, the building permit, the applications prove, they're expected to get, to get the building permit. And then within five days, they're expected to commence the work that they have to take on to repair the structures. And then they have to complete all that work within ninety days. Now, the additional deadline is after construction commences, they've got five days to start the construction once they obtain their permits, but then they, they have to, they can't stop any of their work for more than a ten-day period. And this is gonna take care of that situation where we have somebody that gets down to day seventy or eighty and nothing's happened. They've gotten their permits, but they haven't done anything. We're gonna monitor this very closely, and if they don't meet that guideline, then we're gonna, we're gonna already line up the demolition contractors, and we'll have them over there real quick, take care of business. So that's essentially what we've, the ordinance that we've prepared for you, for those two properties. And that'll give these folks an opportunity to-
And that would be the eleven oh three Bunce Road and the sixty-five twenty-six Portsmouth Drive, sir?
Yes, sir. That concludes our presentation.
I'm sure we have a few questions here, Mr. Hirsch, Mr. Crisp.
Thank you, Mayor. Mrs. Swanson, and you started answering the question a little bit for me, even though I do have some others, but if for any reason that these property owners start to fall through the loop, this ordinance, and I guess tonight, will give you all the authority to go forward with the demo without it coming back to councils, is that correct?
Yes, it will.
Okay. All right. Now, and I have a couple more questions. As we were looking through the, the slides tonight, I saw several of the houses that were boarded up, or at least partially boarded. And because I received a couple of emails, I thought I would just ask this question to you now. How long, not even at this state, but how long can a house stay boarded up? Before it gets into the demolition-
Well, at some point, it's, it's, it's going to, it's gonna get on our radar screen as a blighted property, but, I mean, it is possible to have a, have a building boarded up and not get to that point, as long as there's, they prevent unlawful access into the building.
But doesn't that also help to create the blight for having a boarded up house, almost boarded up like forever?
Uh, I think that'd be a good thing, that's a-
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna take a look at that.
We might need to look at.
Okay.
A lot of people have raised that question.
And another thing, something that we, I think that is a part of policy that I don't see going on, because I didn't see it in the screen here, in, in the pictures, that the, when it's boarded up, it's supposed to be the color of the house, or the, the boards are supposed to be painted. There's something, and you may not, I'm pretty sure you know the ordinance a lot better than I, I do, but whatever the case may be with that ordinance, why isn't that enforced when you can already see that?
I don't know that we have a-
It is. Look at, look it up. It is.
Statute?
Yeah. Yeah. But that's something else, I guess we can look at another time, but if, if you would, but I would like to get a report-
Well, let's come and practice in other jurisdictions I've worked in.
Yeah, I would like to get something sent back to us, counsel, or at least myself, or counsel about the, the painting of that, and, and of course, I guess we'll look at that other thing, maybe on a work session or when it can come back to us. But, but thank you, sir.
Mr. Crisp?
Mr. Swanson, six oh six and six oh eight Mechanic Street. First question, are they owned by the same property holder?
They're owned by, by heirs.
Yeah. Frank, how many heirs do we have?
By heirs. Well, and then the real question is, because I think you said in your briefing that we were unable, or we didn't get a response from the owners, is that right?
That is correct, sir.
And so my only question is, we've done what we're required to do by law in terms of notifying them at the address of record in the tax files and so forth, right?
Yes, sir. That, that is correct, Mr. Crisp. There's the, the general statutes of North Carolina has a publication avenue that we can take on that. Both of those properties were published.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Fowler?
Mr. Swanson, I have a question about the additional deadline of the ten days. The, the question I have about that is, I'm a little bit concerned when somebody's trying to upgrade their property. It, it doesn't, right now, as it's written, it doesn't allow for extenuating circumstances such as a, a extended period of inclement weather, where it might not be appropriate to do the repairs during that inclement weather. Is there gonna be any type of way that we could give them some leeway in that sense? Because right now, as I see it, it's ten days, period. You know, what, if it's in the wintertime, we get snow, makes it hard for people to get out there, roads are closed, that kind of thing. I'm a little concerned that we could have an unintended consequence here of, of actually having a situation where we could have a property that's restored back and it's being lived in, and it's, and it's, you know, providing a, a tax space to the city, that all of a sudden, we've got this arbitrary ten days, and now, I understand the ninety days, that, that should account, give them some time to account for, you know, problems that, that could crop up like that, but, but that, that additional deadline of ten days gives me a little pause for concern for somebody that's stuck with a case of, say, like inclement weather or that type of thing.
Well, sir, to answer the question, most of the codes that we deal with have definite time periods for compliance. However, we have to factor in a, you know, a, a certain level of reasonableness to it because we're always subject to lawsuits for those types of things. And obviously, you know, if we have weather, heavy snow for a period of time, we have to back off on that, on the timeframes that we, that we have, have cultivated in an ordinance, for example. And last year was a, was a prime example of that. We had several buildings that were due to either be placed on a, a list for environmental court and that type of thing. We had to back off during that time period to kind of keep track of the bad weather days that we had. We had numerous buildings downtown that had gone past their time compliance for painting chipped windows and things along that line, and we had to factor that in, too. So, I mean, you just, we tried to keep the ordinance as, as, as limited and as practical as we possibly could. Otherwise, you could, it could turn into a three or four-page document.
Yes, sure. I understand. So in other words, what, if I wanna make sure I'm hearing it right, that you're gonna try to live to the intent of the ordinance, but the intent is for them to complete the work, not necessarily? Okay.
We get five, four days of, of bad weather, and they're not, ten days of bad weather, and they're not out there working, we're not gonna, we're not gonna have the ball hit the, the building. We'll back off of-
Thank you.
Sir, I, I do have a few questions. The verbiage here says that the property owners shall have ninety days to complete the construction, construction work and pass a final building inspection by the city. So at day eighty-nine, they call and say, hey, I want my inspection. How long does it take you all to get out there? Or how does that process work to make sure that they're in that ninety days?
Well, that'd be, whatever, the process that they have for people calling in for final inspections, and normally, it's about a day or so, but even if they're that, if they're to that point where they're, you know, just about complete, if it runs over a period of time, it's, you know, we're not gonna go out there and tear the, tear the building down. What we're, what we're trying to do here is to make sure that we don't have somebody that just completely ignores the order once they get the permit.
So when they, when you all, say, for example, you come out and you do the inspection, and then you say, this is not gonna pass, then what happens? And, and you, you know, you say, this is not ready. How much more time do they get? What, what happens then? Do they get another-
Well, they're gonna get a corrections notice for the, whatever, whatever problem they have with the construction, and they're, they're gonna expect, be expected to take, you know, diligence and following up on that corrections notice and correct whatever condition they have. As long as they stay, stay on, you know, in pace with that, and they've completed most of the work, let them complete the work.
Okay. So it's ninety days, and you go out, 'cause like that second house has trusses and everything that has to be fixed, so you go out there in ninety days, it doesn't, it doesn't pass. So I, I know we don't wanna knock down the properties, but I, I need to get a feel for how long people can milk this out, because citizens have had to live next to these houses for years. So I just would like to get a better feel at some point for what, you know, where do we go with that? So I'll just leave that out there, I guess.
Well, it just, it comes down to a judgment call as to whether somebody is, is, is insincere in what they're doing, and they're, they're making a genuine effort.
And I think the alternative is, in the way we've done it before, the development of this proposal would be if we had a property owner at the end who said, I wanna work on it, we'd say, okay, we're not gonna take action tonight, and we'll bring it back in the future if they don't do it. So this is trying to get ahead of that a little, teeny bit. I don't know if it's better or not, but that, I think that's what it's trying to do.
I, I did have a, a question for Ms. McDonald. You were kinda helping me answer this question during the week. I know that one of the properties, well, both of the properties, the owner said that they didn't have money to repair the properties. So my question became whether or not these properties were insured. And, you know, are, are they getting the money from the insurance and just not repairing them? And, and my understanding is that the second property had no insurance on the home. Is there any city, state, some sort of provision that, you know, he said the insurance was too expensive? So what do we do with that?
Ms. Applewhite, we did, in response to your question, do some research. We were not able to find any specific state law requirement for carrying insurance, but certainly, most lenders, even private lenders typically require property owners to carry insurance. But we weren't able to find any specific state statute to that effect. And obviously, this is the result of that when you don't have insurance.
So the, okay. So there's nothing, my concern is, even if that house, you know, burns down, the houses that are, you know, next to it, that's just not, you know, not a good situation to be in.
I agree. Very similar to, we were, we have had some experience with this as well, same thing with renters' insurance. We don't see where there's any specific state statute that requires you to have that, but obviously, some owners do require the less seas to have renters' insurance in case there is some type of fire that, as you know, particularly when you're talking about multiple-
Units.
Multi-family can, can spread very quickly and cause a lot of damage.
Ms. Arp?
Mr. Swanson, thank you for the layout tonight. If you could, could you go back to your PowerPoint presentation and go back to the timeline that you displayed for the house at Portsmouth? The, the Portsmouth property.
Thank you. According to this slide, I'm just looking at the, the, the fire damage to structure on the twenty-fourth of December, that was a year ago. And, and the utilities were disconnected four days later a year ago, but they had twenty-one calls for nine-one-one service in the last twenty-four months. Does that mean they, they had all those calls while the house was inhabited? Frank, I, I believe those calls were when the house was vacant. So that, I just wanna make sure, so the house was vacant prior to the fire damage?
There was, there were some calls to the house before the fire happened.
Was it vacant before?
No, it was occupied.
No, the house was occupied prior to the fire. So, and all these calls took place after the house was vacated. So the twenty-one calls for nine eleven service occurred during the twelve months after the house was vacated? Yes. Okay.
All right, sir. Thank you very much. Any additional questions? We have everybody? I think so. Okay. What's the direction of council?
Mayor, we gonna do these individually, or?
I think we can do them in two groups.
Two groups, okay.
If that's how people see it.
Okay. I'll, I'll make a motion for the properties at eleven oh three Bunce Road and sixty-five twenty-six Portsmouth Drive. I don't know how to put this together, but I move to allow the owners an additional ninety days to complete the construction work and pass a final building inspection by the city as outlined in the updated demolition ordinance.
Is everyone clear on the motion? Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hirsch. Any discussion on the motion? We're talking about the two partials right now, Bunce Road and Portsmouth. Ms. Applewhite?
Yes, sir. I, I just wanna make a, a comment particularly about the Bunce Road property. That one I'm very familiar with because that was probably one of the first properties I ever got a call from a citizen when I came on council in two, two thousand and seven. I think this is an example of what happens to a neighborhood when a home becomes a tipping point in a neighborhood for blight and, and, and certain activities going on in a home. Councilmember Crisp and I know of citizens who live down this street who have moved because this house has tipped a street after they've lived in a home for twenty-five years raising their families. And this is an example of what ramp I hope will prevent. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? I think we have an appropriate motion and second. Hearing none, let me ask for a vote on that motion, please. Is everyone clear on the motion? That's unanimous? Thanks. Okay. Is there a second motion? Concerning Mechanic Street.
Make a motion to follow staff recommendation on six oh six and six oh eight Mechanic Street.
Thank you, Ms. Davie. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hirsch. Discussion on the motion? Let me ask for your vote, please. That, too, is unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, staff, for your report. We'll move now to item eight, which is today's public hearing. Let me, we have some unusual rules for this public hearing. As you know, we anticipate- As you know, we anticipated that we would have a sizable crowd tonight, and we've doubled the length of the public hearing to a full one hour. We're just asked, we're very interested in hearing from...
You don't want to do nine-four?
Mayor, I just wanted to clarify that we're going to do nine-point-four after the public hearing?
Yeah, nine-four didn't get moved.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. We're going to have a public hearing that lasts up to an hour. We're not going to divide up between in favor and opposition. We're just going to hear from everyone. We're very much interested in hearing from as many people as we possibly can. We do not, in these kind of formats, we do not waive our time to someone else. We really want to hear from you. If you're here tonight, we hope that you will take time to share your thoughts on this important subject for us. We would ask that you start by giving us your name and address clearly for the record. If you could limit your comments to three minutes, that would be most appreciated, and that way, we can make sure we get the largest number of people involved in the public hearing. So having said those guidelines, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk? Do you want to begin? Okay, yes, sir, I'm sorry. Apologize for that, Doug.
Good evening again, Mayor members of council. I will keep this brief in the interest of you having time tonight to hear from the interested stakeholders and citizens who are here to speak to you about Ramp. But I would like to start by giving you a brief history of our program before we begin the public hearing. As you know, the city has been working on Ramp, or some variant thereof, since two thousand and seven. Earlier this year, actually on April twenty-sixth, the city council actually adopted a similar program that we had titled PROP. But the program was repealed on August eighth due to changes in North Carolina law, which invalidated nine of the ten ways in which properties could enter into PROP. At the direction of city council, staff developed Ramp, which is based on a similar program in Charlotte, and we also feel is compliant with North Carolina law. Staff has engaged community stakeholders, some of whom you will hear from tonight during tonight's public hearing. Ramp, in many ways, is very similar to PROP in that it deals with code violations as well as criminal activity on residential rental property. As I mentioned, it is modeled after a similar program in Charlotte that seeks to reduce crime and code violations at residential rental properties. Our program is a little bit different than Charlotte's in that Charlotte's program focuses primarily on crime and what they call social disorder, but our program will focus on crime as well as on code violations at residential rental properties. The underlying belief for Ramp is that property owners and managers can help influence the condition and the activities that occur on their property. The slide in front of you illustrates what I just mentioned. On one side, you see the criminal activity, and looking at criminal activity, the first thing we ask is, is it a rental residential property? Some of the questions that have been posed to me, as we've done the five community meetings, have been, does this apply to all rental property? It applies to only rental residential property, not rental commercial property. We're looking at the top ten percent of crime incidents using a weighted criteria as compared to similarly sized rental properties in the city. If a property meets that threshold, they would be required to develop an action plan to help reduce crime on those properties. On the other side of the slide, you'll see that there's also another way that you can enter into Ramp. The first criteria, again, is it a residential rental? And do you have three or more code violations in a twelve-month period? The code violations, it can be anything from abandoned cars, trash and debris, to damage to a home or surrounding property. That is also included. A list of those violations on both the criminal activity side and the code violation side are included in your agenda package and were made available online in appendixes A and Once in Ramp, properties would be in the program for either six months or one year, depending on how they entered the program. If they entered via crime and criminal activity, they would be in the program for a minimum of six months, and after our initial review, at the end of that six months, if the crime had reduced beyond, below the threshold, they could come out of Ramp at that time. If crime and social disorder continue to be above the threshold, we would keep them in the program for the remaining six months of that year. For code violations, once you're in the program, you would be in the program for one year if you enter via code violations. And under both criminal activity and code violations, the goal is that we would not have additional criminal activity or code violations while you're in the program. If there are further violations, and we are able to identify that the owners have not operated in good faith to help reduce crime or code violations at their property, then the ordinance does provide for the city being able to prevent the owner from receiving rental income on the property for up to one year. This program, just like the earlier PROP program that the city council had adopted, will require resources. The largest area of resources that this program will require will be in the area of personnel. We're looking at one full-time home inspector and one part-time office assistant, too, that will work in our community, in our development services department. From the police department, we'd be looking at two full-time crime analysts, one sworn police officer, one police sergeant, and the program also requires two police cruisers and associated hardware and software, and I can go into greater detail about that as In developing this program, we had to come up with a number of assumptions. As I've mentioned to you in the past, some of these assumptions, we feel fairly comfortable about. Some of the assumptions will change once we get further into the program if council moves to adopt it. Some of the things that we are kind of sure about is that we will have one-time startup cost of about two-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand dollars. That includes the initial advertising, marketing, and education, office setup, the computers for the staff, and software, two police cruisers, officers' equipment and safety gear, as well as training for the personnel. The personnel and operating costs, depending on when the program is adopted, could be, we're looking at partial year funding, half a year, about one-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand dollars. That would be pay for the one full-time inspector, the part-time office assistant, the two crime analysts, the one sworn police officer, and the police sergeant, as well as some of the associated operating costs from travel, training, supplies, mileage, vehicle maintenance, and fuel. Let me show what that looks like a little bit differently. Some of the other assumptions that we had as well in developing this is that we have not included indirect costs for legal, IT, HRD, and collections, or finance. That's similar to the approach we took when we presented to you the PROP program, realizing that there will be some indirect costs in those areas, but we hope that we'll be able to contain those. But if we were to just look at this from a full year, a full fiscal year, we're looking at ongoing cost of about three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, which, again, would cover the associated staff and operating costs, which is shown on the screen. Again, some additional assumptions. We anticipate that if the council were so inclined to start the program in early two thousand and twelve, we would likely not have any revenues from entry into PROP during the remainder of this fiscal year. But we would have work to do in setting up the program, as well as developing our database to look at which properties in the city are rental and in which category they might fall. Also, in anticipating the revenue we might see from the program for properties which enter into Ramp, we anticipate an eighty percent collection rate on that, which would come if the council takes the recommendation of staff, that the fee for entry into Ramp be set at a thousand dollars. That would likely be a hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand dollars in revenue. As you'll see at the bottom of the screen on the table, we're looking at approximately about one-hundred-and-thirty properties entering via code enforcement and about a hundred entering through the criminal activity. Again, that comes up to, then looking at the associated costs from there as well. That doesn't add up to a hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand, something...
Two-thirty.
It's two-hundred-and-thirty, and then you take eighty percent of that, that's to Another way to look at that, again, is the total direct cost for the first year, four-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-five-forty, and then the second year moving to three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. The bottom row shows what we believe would be the general fund investment in the program, as well as what it might look like in the second year if the assumptions about our revenue hold true. As I mentioned to you at an earlier meeting as well, we've got, we would be interested in spending a little bit more time on those numbers, because it very well could be that some of the properties which enter Ramp through code violations very well could be some of the same properties which enter in through crime as well, and so we don't want to double count those in our revenue projections. Again, this is looking at the budget from a different perspective. And so the recommendation of staff tonight is to receive public comment and provide direction to staff. If the city council believes the Ramp ordinance and program are ready for adoption, staff recommend scheduling formal consideration on Monday, January ninth, two thousand and Before we begin the public hearing in just a moment, I also wanted to update the council on the efforts that we've taken to try to engage our stakeholders in the community. We have a website that we have maintained for more than a year as we were working on PROP. We have continued to update information on that website, which is listed on the screen in blue, for Ramp as well. We've had five information meetings, one with the Realtors Association, one with the Apartment and Property Managers Association, and three public meetings, one at Clifdale, one at Fire Station Fourteen, and one here at City Hall. As staff had promised the people who attended those meetings, we would provide the council with the stakeholders' letters that we received, either in writing or via email, and we sent those to the city council with your weekly report on November fourth, two thousand and eleven. And we've also provided tonight's briefing materials to all of the interested stakeholders who have identified themselves and provided me with their email address. So the same information that the city council is looking at right now, absent the PowerPoint, all of the stakeholders were provided with that as well. And so, Mayor, as the mayor indicated, in an effort to hear from all the stakeholders, the council's guidelines for tonight's public hearing are as follows. Each speaker may speak for up to three minutes. The public hearing has been extended to last up to one hour. Speakers cannot yield their time to others, and we would ask that all speakers state their name and address for the record when they come to the podium. And with that, Mayor...
Any questions for staff to attend? Thank you, guys. Okay, Mayor, what other questions here?
Mayor, council members, our first speaker tonight is Ms. Stella Mullen.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is Stella Mullen. I reside at one forty-one May Street. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the Ramp program and show examples of why we need it. I am representing the elderly residents who are afraid to speak and the residents who have just given up on getting any help from our government with this problem. In two thousand and nine, I was asked to take the position of the president of the Massey Hill Community Watch. While I was somewhat reluctant because I knew it would be a very time-consuming job, I felt it was the right thing to do. I wanted to help take back our community from the drug dealers and prostitutes who had taken over. My first assessment was to take a look at our neighborhood as a whole and see where the worst problems were. My attention was immediately called to the nineteen-hundred block of Powell Street, two-thousand block of Center Street, Coog Street, and Dallas Street, where we had numerous drug houses and all other kinds of illegal activity taking place. The common thread that I found to these areas were the rental properties. Rentals with their peeling paint and broken windows, places that looked like they should be demolished and hard to believe that someone was actually renting them out for money. I wrote letters to these property owners for some of our most troubled spots, but this yielded very little help. Because, you see, these property owners know that there is very little that I can do to stop them. The Massey Hill Community Watch has worked hard with our city police and our inspections department, and they have done a tremendous job. All these efforts have paid off to some extent, but we need more help. We need the Ramp program because it will force these type of property owners to come to the table and face the problems. The only way a property manager will be fined is if they do absolutely nothing to correct the problems, which is more than fair. This program would help so many communities that have fallen prey to bad property management. I know that there is a lot of opposition from the rental management establishments because they are afraid of receiving a fine, but please consider the fine that is paid by the homeowner, the regular resident who has lived in a neighborhood all their life and is now forced to watch crime and blight creep in due to poor rental management. Please consider the fine that they pay, which comes at a much greater cost. In closing, I would like to share some calls from one of our most recent problem areas, three hundred Dallas Street. You will see by the handout here that I have for you tonight, a small glimpse of what we face on a regular basis, and I'll submit this for your review. Has several different calls, assault with a gun, domestic violence, large disturbances, and I just want to thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Council, Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Sandra Mitchell.
In our efforts to revitalize our community, and after having read the proposed Ramp ordinance, I find this ordinance to be very beneficial for not only our community, but all communities throughout the city of Fayetteville. So I ask that you adopt this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our next speaker is Kim Schultz.
My name is Kim Schultz. I'm from sixty-six ninety-four Halberton Lane, Fayetteville. I'm the property manager of the cottages-on-Elma Apartments community here in Fayetteville. I'm also serving as the two thousand and twelve president of Cumberland County Apartment Association. I would like to share that the majority of our apartment communities in Fayetteville screen our applicants before they even become residents. At the cottages, our applicants must qualify financially and pass a full nationwide criminal background check. If they do not meet both of these standards, they do not rent from us. Since November first to today, the cottages processed thirty-eight applications, twenty-three were declined, twelve due to bad credit, three for having prior evictions elsewhere, and eight for having criminal activity charges, one of which was just for possessing up to one-half ounce of marijuana. As my leasing criteria is currently written, and as with ninety-five percent of other apartment communities in Fayetteville, we cannot even rent to Martha Stewart because she is a convicted felon. In Ramp's frequently asked question section, question one asks about the intent of Ramp. The answer given is, the goal is that no Ramp ever be issued, because if this is the case, it means the rental property owners throughout the city are ensuring that their properties are well-cupped, up to city code, and are well-monitored, and their tenants are respectful of their neighbors. The issue with that answer is that we, as a multifamily industry, have, is that we have found that our tenants are not the ones breaking into their homes or into their cars. It is the citizen walking down the street, looking for a way to make a dollar off of our tenants who have been approved to live in our communities. How can the city issue points to the property owner if a BNE occurs on the city streets? Will Fayetteville Police be providing their serve-and-protect motto to our screened and approved residents? A question that has been raised at the apartment association meetings is that before a letter is issued to the property owner requiring a meeting concerning that Ramp thresholds have been met at the top ten percent of crime and social disorder, how is the police department going to notify the property manager that a crime has occurred on the property? Numerous managers have stated that they have identified themselves to the officers that are responding to the calls and have been told, we don't have an answer for you yet, we'll get back to you. End of subject. We have tried to reach out to the Fayetteville Police to get a response, and none. The multifamily communities in Fayetteville are willing to work with city management, but we need to know what is occurring in a timely manner. In numerous places, it's been quoted that meetings have been held with interested stakeholders. The apartment... The apartment industry was contacted, and we were told that it was a general meeting. From what we have seen in this draft, nothing has been considered after we voiced our concerns. We are willing to sit on a task force to help Fayetteville have a good working ramp product if such a product is needed. Perhaps we should make better use of the ordinances. Apartments and multifamily communities are here to make Fayetteville a great place to live, but Fayetteville is making the owners reconsider Fayetteville as a place to have their residents live with ramp as is written tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for coming, ma'am.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Liz Brazil. Our next speaker is Mr. Jonathan Elliott.
My name is Jonathan Elliott. My address is PO Box 43606 here in Fayetteville. I've been following this, and I'm a stakeholder, but I've been following this program and coming to these meetings and coming to the work sessions, and when I very first started coming, one of the things I said was, is, "What do we need? What are we trying to accomplish?" And the two things that I got back was, is, "We needed to be able to go into these rental houses and rental apartments because our inspectors are not able to go into these places unless they have permission from either the owner or the tenant." Well, there's an answer to that. If these inspectors that we have, and we have a lot of code inspectors, if they have anywhere from a Class 1 to a Class 3 license, they can go into those places with probable cause. That answers the question. They can go and inspect these places if they have the proper licensing. One of the other things we came up with was that we needed to get rid of crime-ridden areas and properties. Well, guess what? I mean, it's just a matter of turning loose Chief Bergermine over here to get rid of the crime. We need to arrest these criminals, and we need to keep arresting them until they leave Cumberland County. We won't have problems if the criminals are either in jail or in some other county. We need to help the landlords get expediated evictions, and we need to use the existing nuisance property laws, just like we're doing on the commercial end of it. When Bill Agapian was renting out places to the Palomina nightclub, and it was causing property problems, and we were having shootings and stuff, we sent him a letter and said, "We're going to take your property away unless you take care of these problems." He took care of the problem. More recently, there was a place over here at Falcon Village Shopping Center, same thing. A club that he had as a tenant started having problems. You send him a letter, said, "We're going to take the property away." He's fixing his problem. He has filed eviction on those tenants. That's what'll take care of these problems without us expanding government. We don't need to expand government. The city of Fayetteville has more than enough on their plate to spend money on than to expand government and have another program that we can already take the existing laws that are on the books and solve. One of the other things I wanted to mention was, is, a lot of the stakeholders gave feedback during these meetings, and none of the work sessions that I personally attended did I hear any discussion whatsoever on the solutions to the problems that the stakeholders brought to the meetings. You know, we have come to these meetings, and we've come in here with solutions to your problem instead of just saying blanket that we're against these things. We want to solve the problems, and we have been trying to be part of the solution, but I have not heard any of that in any of the work sessions. I guess it's time for me to wrap up, but one of the things I'll say is, is, one fix that won't cost this city a cent is to require that all properties have a professional property manager, a licensed property manager assigned to that property. We're here to help you solve your problems. It's the people that are out there managing those properties by themselves that have no clue. Those are the ones you're causing, that are causing problems with. If you send them a letter saying you're fixing, take their property away from them. If they don't fix their nuisances, they'll even straighten up, or they'll probably call one of us in the property management business and say, "Take care of my property for me."
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Royce Hawley.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, appreciate you allowing us the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Royce Hawley. My address is 5511 Lewis Sales Road, Kernersville, North Carolina. I'm an outsider. I work with Blue Ridge Property Management. We own and operate two communities here in Fayetteville, fairly large communities, and I would point out that ours don't look like the pictures you just saw on the screen a few minutes ago. If they did, I wouldn't have a job. But I would echo kind of the same sentiments that Ms. Schultz spoke to a few minutes ago, and I think the main thing for me is that, no matter what we do, we can't legislate morality. We screen our residents, just like most folks in this room do. Something like 25% of our applicants are not approved. I get calls all the time, get cussed out all the time from people who were turned down by our criteria because it's always something, "Well, that didn't really happen. That was dismissed," or whatever. We don't take them. But despite all those efforts, crime does and will occur in every part of this city. That's just a fact. But in the ramp program, some of the things that I'm looking at on here are things that are just beyond our control, and I'll give you a few examples. We see a lot of car break-ins at our communities, not only in Fayetteville, but across the southeast, and, you know, you might find it's hard to believe, but probably 90% of the time, it's because somebody left a GPS, or a laptop, or a pocketbook, or something in plain view, which obviously creates an opportunity for somebody to break into their vehicle. Why should we, as property managers, be held accountable for somebody else's failure to protect their property? It doesn't make sense. Additionally, we see a lot of, not a lot, but a certain number of apartment break-ins. All of our apartments are armed with alarms, intrusion alarms, and would it surprise you to know that probably 90% of those break-ins that occurred, the people didn't even arm their alarms? Again, if they had used the tools that we provided, they wouldn't have had the situation that they had. And then, a lot of your violent crime is domestic, or it's a crime of passion. And again, in situations like that, we have screened these people, you know, thoroughly, but if it's a crime of passion, there's nothing that we can do to prevent it. If it would have happened in our apartment complex or in your neighborhood, if it's a crime of passion, it's going to occur. So, I would just close by urging all of you to reconsider, especially the criminal piece of this, and as they've stated before, we'd be more than happy to work with you folks to work out a plan that's amenable if need be. But I think, you know, holding property owners accountable for things like this are just, it's beyond me. I don't understand it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Jimmy Jones.
City Council, I want you to know that I'm not in the rental business. I own J&amp;J Pest Solutions here in Fayetteville, but I do a lot of work in rental properties, and I'd like for them to continue to grow in our area. I have been all over the county, city. I'm in the best places in the world we've got here, and we've got some nice places. We have got some things like we just saw on the screen. But please note the difference of what it is. We're not talking about apartment complexes. We're talking about individual units that have been dilapidated, left standing to fall down. Do have some questions, though, that I need to ask, and I don't understand it because I don't see it listed in here. I know that certain areas of town does have more crime than others, such as Cross Creek Mall. We had a shooting out there just the other day, but could we control that? Really something I don't know how we're going to handle. But I also would like to know, is Fayetteville Metropolitan Housing going to be included in this? That's the biggest rental agency in town. I have not heard anyone speak of it. I have spent many years doing pest control work in those units. Some of them are pretty doggone sad, tremendously so. But yet, we want to turn right around and look at these places that spent piles of money to build nice apartment complexes and then condemned these folks. I was doing fast figures a while ago, and based on the figures that was put on the board for a partial year of $186,000, but yet a whole year turns out to be 350, my figure is $373,674. Are we here to solve problems that we can't really handle because we can't make adults do what we want them to do? It was one thing whenever I was a father and my son was at home, he was 12 years old, I could spank him. He's 32 today. I cannot spank him today. So, in just, right now, I guess you can understand I'm opposed to this the way it's written. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mayor, council, our next speaker is Mr. Robert C. Anderson.
Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for the opportunity. Is Amanda Circle in your area? Do you know what the problem is with Amanda Circle? About nine of the houses that this gentleman was talking about here were Fayetteville Metropolitan Housing Authority. I got interested in it a couple of years ago and went out there and started doing a little research. These were all nine together. Oh, and then there were 11 that were on Section 8, and it took a really nice neighborhood and destroyed it. Now, what are we going to do? Are they going to get $1,000 on each house? Oh, no, that's federal government. You can't do it, can you? I can answer that one for you. I think the attorney will probably help us with that. How about renters versus homeowners? If somebody's got a trashy house and he messes it up, are we going to put a $1,000 fine on them? These are serious questions we need to deal with. Now, I'm for making this place a better place to live, and I put my money where my mouth is. I bought the property located at 313 South Cool Spring Street, which was a known drug house. I kicked the druggers out and put a family in. The only problem is, and I've noticed by the police department and others, the drugger that lived in there is a little punk. He's about 19 years old now. His father's in jail for life for murder, and his mother's in jail currently for I don't know how long. He just wants to follow in his parents' footsteps, I guess. I don't know. But it really makes me feel bad when the guy's standing on the, just across the street, selling the drugs. 238 South Cool Spring Street. Ask him for the numerous thick binders. Now, just the other day, about two weeks ago, I heard two shots, and I got up, went out on my front porch, and people were scattering from this house. And I called Mr. Hewitt and asked him what happened, what was the results, because there I waited 30 minutes for a police officer. I thought that would just jump right up to the top of the list, shots fired. And after 30 minutes, I gave up and went home. I was, I've got it on tape, a, where this captain, don't even know his name, and it don't, it don't matter, but he called me up and pretty much chewed me out about what did I want him to do. Well, that just kind of sickened me. I'm running out of time, but if you want to see a property that costs this city money, 238 South Cool Spring Street. And I was told that when officers got on the scene, that there was nobody there. It's almost 9:00. Go over there or drop by there on your way home. I'm sure you'll find quite a large number of people. We got a problem with, in these same areas, with people tampering with electric. They're stealing electric, and I've been working with PWC, and PWC is doing the best they can. But this is an epidemic in this city and county. It is an epidemic. Now, I think part of the solution would be, let's not put it on, just on the police or the inspections, because both of them are good and they've both got good people. If we really want to solve the problem, we need to address what the problem is and its crime, and then ask our chief, our city manager, what, how much manpower, how much money do you need? And then, if we all really feel that good about making this a better place, then we come up with the money. And if it's raised taxes, God forbid me being a Republican. Raise the taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Mary Jo Anderson.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I guess I'm a stakeholder. I don't know. I come to the gate a little bit late because I left here when Prop, we had the big Prop meeting last time, and I read in the paper, it went down, and I went, "Yes, thank you." And this is the first time I just found this in my email. So, I'm a little bit late. It sounds great, but it sounds like it's Prop, it's VAMP or Ramp or whatever the heck it is, but it's really Prop due, you know? I mean, it's the same thing because it looked good as far as getting rid of crime. I'm all for that. Believe me, I am. I'm for wonderful Fayetteville. We've made it our adopted home. But where, when we get in, how do I know if someone, we have, I think, over 70 rental properties, how do I know if there's had, if they've had the police out to the property? I don't know. I'm not a soothsayer, and if I wait for them to notify me by mail, this I want to show you, is the property, the 313 that he referred to, the drug house. We purchased it in March last year, this year, I'm sorry. It still is in the other person's name, and we just got the new tax bill for it just now, nine months later. I could have had a baby, except I'm too old. However, we didn't get it. So, how are they going to notify me when the police go to a property? And I think that ignorance of the law is something, and I don't get, I don't get any benefits for that. The other thing, there's just all kinds of holes in this thing that I have questions about. It says that I'm, as the landlord, I'm responsible for making sure the tenant does what they're supposed to do. I think there's something called quiet enjoyment, and I can't just barge into their house and say, "Okay, I'm here. What are you doing? Oh, gotcha." I'm not allowed to do that. Come on. I can't. If I could, believe me, I, no, I probably wouldn't do it anyway. At any rate, how am I supposed to do that? Plus, it also, when I read Appendix A, I have a few questions. When we get down to, oh, where was it? Item 0410, it says, "It's three points for it," is what I'll get, and it's all other. What's an all other? Can I even define it? It's everything else but? Is that what it is? That's a little bit nebulous. And so, our unlawful assembly, how many people is an unlawful assembly? If I have a Christmas party, and is that an unlawful assembly? Am I going to have to start to get a permit if I want to have a Christmas party? And then, how about the parole and probation violations? I know my tenant's going to tell me about that. I know they're going to say, "Oh, yeah, I was, yeah, I'm just getting out." At any rate, there's a lot of things here that are not answered. I would love to attend some meetings. I hope that we don't just jam this down our throats come next month because there's a lot of stuff here. Even one thing even says that they have the right to go back and change some of the criteria for the housing after it's, after the thing passes. That's kind of like our new health thing that we've just passed. We're going to find out what it entails after it passes. So, it still is Prop, ladies and gentlemen.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Kristin McAliff. Our next speaker is Mr. Will Brownlee.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Will Brownlee. I am from 4020 West Chase Boulevard in Raleigh. I am admittedly an outsider. I am admittedly an outsider, but I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I stand here as an attorney who represents a number of landlords, both in Raleigh and in Fayetteville area. And as an attorney in Raleigh in particular, I've had a chance over the last seven years to see Raleigh's Prop program, which was one of the models of this Ramp program. And I've had a good opportunity to compare and contrast the programs and the lessons learned, and would like to share them with you. But in hearing the original presentation tonight, I was struck by how it was presented to you, which would be, as long as the landlords deal with you in good faith and they try to comply in good faith, that some of these remedies listed in the Ramp program may not apply. In reading the proposed ordinance itself, I'm struck that that's not really the case. Specifically, one of the proposed ordinances is 14-65A. It says that if you have more than three code violations in a 12-month period, you're going to be enrolled and be registered. And then the disturbing language is whether or not it's resolved by corrective action, which means regardless if the landlord is trying in good faith, they're still going to be required to be registered, still be forced to pay $1,000. That does not sound like a program that rewards the landlords who are acting in good faith to do the right thing, as compared to admitted landlords who have a proclivity not to do the right thing. But it lumps them all in one basket, as if they're all the same. And I don't believe that is fair. That also leads me to the second point, which is, these code violations, three per property, are judged for the entire property. If you're an apartment community with 100 or 200 units, you're going to be 100 or 200 times more likely to have these code violations, even minor ones, than a single-family house. It puts an unfair burden on multifamily providers. Third thing is, the more stringent provision is, when you have four or more violations, one extra after getting enrolled. 14-66A states that the city shall revoke the registration and prohibit them from renting for a year. It's not discretionary, it's written as the word "shall." So if you have four violations on a family, on a multifamily property, you may be shut down for a year. If you can imagine the effect that that might have, if you're trying to eliminate blight, there's your recipe for creating more blight by shutting down a community.[742.82][742.82](APPLAUSE). And I see my time is winding down, but I just want to emphasize that I don't believe there's a debate anywhere in the room that we all want the same thing. I think we all want a safe community, we all want safe housing. But I have to wonder, does this get us where we need to be? Does it reward the good landlords, the managed landlords, the ones who are trying to make it a safe community? And does it lump them into the same basket with the landlords you're trying to prevent? And I believe, as it's written, it does. And I'm not sure that's a recipe for success. Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Susan Passmore.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Susan Passmore. I'm also an outsider. My address is 6008 West Haven Lane, Trinity, North Carolina. I work for the same organization as Royce Hawley, Blue Ridge Companies, and I'm also the current president of the Apartment Association of North Carolina. I do want to really just reiterate what the other folks have said here tonight. I think everyone is willing to work together as a working stakeholder group. I commend you for meshing, you know, learning from the other cities that have tried to do plans like this, Raleigh and Charlotte. And I do think that the Ramp program is really a mesh of both of those. So I do commend you for reaching out and trying to learn from other cities, but I would say we need to take that one step further and actually get working stakeholder meetings together, where the interested parties can work jointly to identify the needs, identify the goals, identify the workable solutions, and, most importantly, the methods for measuring the success of the program. I also commend you for the ordinance calls for a review board, but that review board should also be charged with evaluating the program as it grows. Other cities that have programs like these, they, the review board is not only charged with reviewing appeals, but it's also charged with evaluating the program. As far as the actual sections of the ordinance, my concerns with the Disorder Activity section is that part focuses on the, the language really focuses on the Disorder Activity count. It doesn't focus on the Disorder Activity threshold, which is the 10%, and how is that math determined? Why is it not 2% or 4% like the other larger, you know, larger cities that have incorporated policies like these? Why is it 10%? Who's in the 10%? I don't think half of us would be as scared, you know, as we are now, if we knew, are we in the 10%? And am I in the 10%? The other cities that have done this, have identified those properties, they know going into building the ordinance, who's in the property, how many is in each category, such on and so forth. Charlotte rolled out their program about 22 months ago. Theirs is the one that's focused on the crime. And I will tell you, from being an operator in that city, that the, my perception is that it's really off to a slow start, and for most part, hasn't been implemented. The hesitancy, as I see it, and other operators in Charlotte see it, is that the police department is reluctant to issue the data identifying somebody in the top 10% because of various reclassifications of crime and exact locations. The other point that I would like to make before my time runs out is that regarding the section of the code that deals with, or the section of the ordinance that deals with the code violation, and how that, or how that was born out of the newly revised general statute 160A-424. 160A-424 may allow an ordinance to require registration of properties that have three or more verified violations, but Section D of that statute clearly says that a registration fee can only be charged if there are two or more violations in a rental unit, not in a rental property, as this Ramp program has been designed. So there are some fundamental flaws. I believe you've heard from plenty of folks that are willing to work with you on this, and I commend you for your efforts. Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Angela Ruff.
My name is Angela Ruff. I reside at 4450 Kinkey Court here in Fayetteville. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Many of my comments have already been spoken by some of my peers, but I'm going to reiterate them anyways. I have been working in property management in Fayetteville for 10 years. I'm a district manager with Cabinist and Kate's, who has over 1,000 apartments in this area. I will also be serving as the vice president for the Cumberland County Apartment Association for 2012. I'm opposed to the Prop and Ramp program because, as a manager, I am simply unable to control the actions and behaviors of other adults. Additionally, the guests our residents may bring into our communities. Punishing owners with fees or fines will never change that we cannot control other people. Our property management requires that all applicants pass a credit, criminal, income, eviction, check writing, background check before moving into one of our communities. Additionally, we evict residents for criminal activities. With taking measures such as these, why would we be held liable for actions that are not our own? I hope that you take these factors into consideration for your future decision-making, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ruff.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. James Pop.
James Pop, 101 Goodyear Avenue, 28303. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers. I represent the residents of the Cornbow neighborhood in Districts 3 and 4. We would very much like you to pass the Rental Action Management Program when it comes up for a vote. Cornbow is an older neighborhood developed in the 1950s and 60s, and a good number of the residents are original homeowners from that time, and we are asking you for your help. We have many problem houses in the neighborhood, but I will only use three of them in tonight's discussion. One landlord owns two, but both of the landlords are city residents. For the past five years of our community watch, every tenant in those three houses have been criminals. Most were evicted after the police raided the property or made numerous arrests out of the houses. The landlords received the standard letter from the police department saying, stating what was found at the house, and if the activity continues, the city may seize their property. I think every landlord in Fayetteville that has received that letter knows that is a hollow threat. Just think about these numbers and crimes for a second. Combined out of those three houses, there has been 10 arrests for drug activity, four arrests for breaking and entering or theft, four arrests for prostitution, three arrests for gang-related activity, two arrests for dogfighting, and even so far as identity theft and obtaining property by false pretenses. If this was happening in your neighborhoods, you'd be demanding something be done about it. We desire what every law-abiding resident of this city desires, a safe neighborhood to raise our children and to live out our remaining days. The current criminal catch-and-release program currently being conducted by this county judicial system makes that difficult. But if the landlords who knowingly rent to criminals just for the rent money are held some way accountable, that is a good start. I have been on both sides of this issue. I was sent overseas for three years and turned my house over to a rental manager, oh, by the way, of a big rental company in this city. In those three years, the police had been to my house 12 times, because it had turned into a crack house, a weekend gambling spot, and my two-car garage was turned into a brothel with all the evidence left for me to clean up when I came home. I wish someone would have informed me what was happening in my house at that time. We are asking for your help in this matter. Please, pass the Ramp proposal when it comes up for a vote. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Stephen Street.
My name is Stephen Street. I live 1406 Powell Street. I'm really impressed about how the big property owners are making lots and lots of money. But in Massa Hill, we got the inspection department, I go condemn a house, Inspector Lees, he'll take the sign down, still rent the house. We can be, I can be supper, be with the family, and look out the door, a house is be burning. Ours is an older community, Massa Hill is. I'm for the crop thing, but I'm really impressed by how a lot of the big, the big people is taking care of the property. I wish some of these characters, like in Massa Hill, that has got four or five houses, and I spoke to several of them in the past, and they said, "That's the only way they can make money, is rent to these people." But every two, two to three months, the police had been out several times, raided the house, and then they're finally evicted, and then, it's just, it's a scary situation. I wish some of the small, it could be, it could be changed a little bit, for like in smaller, older neighborhoods, because it gets tough out there when you're trying, with your family and your grandkids and your children and stuff like, it's getting really tough. But with bigger houses, I'm really impressed by how they're taking care of the stuff. I wish some of these characters, like in Massa Hill and some of these smaller neighborhoods, would take care, would take care of their houses like, but they don't care. They say, "That's the only way they make money." They'll stick a sign out in the yard, if somebody come by with a pocket full of money, they'll rent it, three months later, they're evicted, and they come back. Anyhow, I just, I just want to share that, maybe some kind of other, it could be changed in that respect. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Street.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Anthony Castillo.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers, residents of Fayetteville, North Carolina. My name is Anthony Castillo. I live at 1804 Waterfall Way, Spring Lake, North Carolina, which is a new residence about six months ago, leaving Fayetteville. I have in the past told my horror story of living among people who sold drugs from their home, turned their homes into houses of prostitution and crack houses, people who have committed murder and attempted murder, homes broken into where the victims could least afford their losses, in open-air drug markets on our streets. I tried doing my part with the help of others to make this community Ramsey Street corridor from the VA Medical Center to Hillsborough Street, and Langdon from Ramsey Street to Seabrook Row, safe for all who live in this community. Making our community safe, I called 911 and writing letters to the landlords, telling them what was going on in their rental houses, even to the point of suing a landlord in Superior Court and successfully stopping the criminal behavior on their rental properties. Yes, people were evicted by the landlord, but the problem is that they rented to the same type of people over and over and over again, with different names who committed the same types of crimes while renting from the same landlords. Some landlords brought mayhem to our community by renting to people who had no source of visible income, leaving in its wake decent folks who could not afford to move or could not sell their homes, the old and poor, who have just as much right to safe housing like everyone else in the city of Fayetteville. After three years, two years as a community watch coordinator, and seeing our community frustrated that landlords were not held accountable to whom they were renting to, that I was able to move and seeing my rental insurance dropping $70 a year and my credit score going up for moving from this area. I'm glad that the city of Fayetteville has taken an active role to protect those who cannot protect themselves, that our city government knows that the landlord has a legal and moral responsibility to provide safe and habitable housing in our rental market, and anything less is no longer acceptable in our honorable city. I think the city, I thanked the city council beforehand that they will approve some type of protection to renters and the community from landlords who take shortcuts at the expense of law-abiding citizens. And let me add that where I live now, there's no crime. There's a, they sign a lease that says zero tolerance, they do a background check, criminal background check, credit check, et cetera, and it's 219 apartments, and there's no crime. So I know it can be done in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming.
Sir, our next speaker is Ms. Karen Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, viewing members. I would first like to say that I think it needs to be understood that we are not against Ramp. We are, understand the blighted communities in our city, and we definitely want the cleanup to happen as well, but I just think there's a different way that we can go about doing that. And I think working with the apartment communities would be that way, that we could do that, and with other rentals in the city. I would tell you also, and I apologize, my name is Karen Valenzuela, my address is 127 Gallberry Lane, Fayetteville, North Carolina. With that being said, I also, I sent a letter back to the city council members back on October the 31st, and I'd just like to hit a highlight, a couple of highlights from that letter. I would mention that I heard from no one once I received that letter. We do appreciate the ongoing efforts to clean up some of the more blighted communities in Fayetteville, and I understand the importance of treating all communities equally, regardless of their location in the city. We, in the experienced multifamily business, do know the importance of fair and equal treatment for all parties involved, and would expect this in all cases, thus the reasons for our structured qualifications. Unfortunately, we feel as though the communities who are members of both the Apartment Association, the Realtors Association, who do rentals, and those who do annually update and educate their staff and residents on the importance of keeping our communities safe, clean, crime-free, drug-free, it feels like we're the ones that are having to pay for the penalties of these other communities that may not be doing that. One of the issues that concerns us is that with and through the education from our Crime Prevention Department here at the Fayetteville Police Department, when they come out and talk with us at a community watch meeting, one of the things that they always tell our residents is, "If you see something that doesn't look right, it probably is not right. Pick up the phone and call the police." Well, now, we're going to be afraid to encourage our residents to pick up the phone and call the police if they see something that is not going to be looking right, because that's now going to possibly put us in that upper 10%. So we're not going to feel comfortable doing that. In doing this, we inform our residents to assist us by calling the police, and if they witness anything, again, I apologize for that, I kind of overspoke. Why not look at also, and I think I heard somebody mentioned earlier, that they're looking at the 10%? Why not start at 3% or 4%? Why bite off more than we can chew if we're already starting with a program? Why bite off more than we can chew if we're already starting with a program that we don't know where it's going to take us to begin with? We're, we're starting with something that's not a tried and true product, so why start high? Start low and work into that if we need to. It's our responsibility as property managers to take care of the communities for our owners. I think it should be the same responsibility for other communities also, to take care, for their owners to take care of them. Our city's known for its wonderful volunteers who are willing to assist with other charitable needs. Why not put these blighted communities maybe on a volunteer schedule? It's just a suggestion. For rental houses a problem, use the available county tax records to charge that owner. We all know that there are those that just don't care, and I don't think any program's ever going to change that, unfortunately. Us in the multifamily industry, we deal with a lot of responsible adults, and we deal with some unresponsible adults, and I don't think this program or any program is going to change that, it's just a fact of what we do deal with daily. I do thank you for seriously looking at these considerations. I would ask that you please consider the multifamily when you do get ready to make a decision. And just one other question that I would have is, I heard Mr. Jones, when he referenced the Fayetteville Metropolitan Housing, concern military housing that was just recently annexed, are they also going to have to follow the same rules and guidelines that we are? Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Our next speaker is Mr. Bill Nye.
My name is Bill Nye. I reside at 1016 Chapin Oak Road in Raleigh, but as the chief executive officer for Caviss and Cates, I spend way more time in Fayetteville than I do in Raleigh. Will Brownlee pointed out several reasons why this thing just isn't ready for a vote come January. He pointed out many reasons why, as the CEO of Caviss and Cates, I can't support this. I recognize that this program isn't written with us in mind, but as Mr. Brownlee pointed out, several issues raise major flags that cause me to have great concern. He also pointed out that, as Ms. Applewhite pointed out, she wants ramp to, to make these blighted properties go away, and he's exactly right. If you take a property, say, no rental income for a year, that's a blighted property, and we're going to see this problem just explode throughout the city, and I think that's a huge, huge mistake. So this program's not ready for a vote. This program is far from being what we need it to be to help everybody. Look, I'm sympathetic to what these folks are talking about tonight and the things they have to deal with, and I'm telling you that if any of my residents had to deal with any of these problems, I would, you know, I would blow my top. I can't imagine living like that. So we need a program, but the program you have in place is not the program. So we need to go back to the drawing board. Karen Valenzuela pointed out also that, that this program is going to encourage or, or really lead us to the point where we say, "Please don't call the police." Now imagine you've got some residents who have a kid living there who's a real problem child, he's a troublemaker, and the police keep coming to that house because of that child. The landlord then goes to that low-income family and says, "If you don't get your kid under control, I'm going to raise your rents because this is the fine that I'm going to get." Well, what's that low-income family going to believe? And so now, now all of a sudden, we're in a situation where not only is the landlord not calling the police, but the family's also afraid to call the police. Any program that, that causes us to say, "Don't call the police," is a grossly flawed program and needs to be revised. Mr. Hewitt's model clearly shows a loss, but what it doesn't show is the loss in revenue from permits going away, because I'm going to tell you, as the CEO of Caviss and Cates, I look at several things when we're thinking about building the property. You know, we look at infrastructure, we look at land costs, we look at taxes, we also look at governmental structure, and if governmental structure says, "If you do business in our town, you're going to pay through the nose," we don't want to do business in that town. And so there's going to be a loss of revenue from permits, there's going to be a tremendous loss in revenue from future property taxes, because I don't even have to begin to tell you what our tax bill is. I can tell you that we spend $3.5 million a year here in Fayetteville alone, operating our properties, because we want to do it right, and I want to help the city of Fayetteville do it right, whether it's one of my properties or not. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Ms. Mary Gwynn.
Mary Gwynn is not here tonight.
Okay. Mr. Tom Gwynn.
Mr. Tom Gwynn is not here tonight.
Okay. Mr. George Butterfly.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilpeople. Once again, I'm before you with my hat in hand, begging you to do something. I had a speech written, and I left it home, because I wanted to see what I was going to hear here, and I'd like to commend Caviss and Cates and the Apartment Association for doing a wonderful job, both great organizations. I think one of the issues we're missing here is the difference between an apartment and a house. I come from Massie Hill, we don't have a lot of apartments. What we have is a lot of derelict houses that are 600, 700 square feet, haven't seen a new shingle in 20 years. This is why I want to support this program. It's the habitual criminal house. Now I know, we're getting all the rejects from the people that are doing their jobs right, and these people are renting over and over and over again, and it's, it's a revolving door of, it's almost like, well, good case. We had a landlord rent a house, and not only did he rent a house to a drug dealer, but he provided him with the drugs. Oh, my gosh, oh, my gosh, the man still owns the property. The man still owns the property. We've got Coode Street, we've got Sinner Street, we've got Dallas, we've got Jumeulon, we've got all these streets, and, I mean, I would, if any of these people would come to our community watch meeting, we'd invite them with open arms, because we want to know more too. I understand the dilemma, apartments, houses, business, whatnot, but we're a community of small, old houses, and like Mr. Castillo says, I just want to live all my life in peace. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Glenda Butterfly.
She's not available.
Our next speaker is Mr. Freddie McLean, Senior.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My address is P.O. Box 58375, Fayetteville, North Carolina. I come here to tell you that I am a landlord, I support the police, I support the inspectors, but I cannot support the ramp as it's written. Yesterday's Fayetteville Observer said that the ramp would target owners who failed to address code violations. Well, if we look at that Section 1465 of the proposal that Fayetteville has, it has the landlord paying a $1,000 fine instantly. This is a $1,000 money grab, it's simply a clever tax. This is a tax, this is what it is, it's a tax on landlords. We already have laws on the books that strongly deal with landlords with substandard properties. Why do we need this new tax? Landlords are already property owners too, usually more than two, and so we're doing our job out there, even though landlords get a bad press, there are some good landlords in Fayetteville. You won't see my name on too many of your lists, but I do own properties in these low-income areas. The most outrageous part of this new landlord tax program that I observed, sounds good on the surface, all the hype sounds good, but when you look deep into it, and look at it, and read that actual proposal that Mr. Hewitt gave us, I have a hard time understanding how anybody could intelligently administer this program in what we're calling an all-American city. When this program that we borrowed from Charlotte was presented, the then Charlotte mayor said that this program was a cover-up, a smokescreen, a mirage for a broken criminal justice system. But what we did here in Fayetteville is took their program, and Charlotte had said that the landlords that were in the top 4% of that model would meet with the police, and then those landlords would work out a deal with the police, and if they could not reduce the crime, then they would be fined. But here in Fayetteville, we say that we're going to fine the landlord $1,000 before we even meet with him, and in our proposal, we say that that meeting can occur on the phone. If that landlord does not have that $1,000, then we're going to take that landlord's property, and it's in that proposal. Now, if we're trying to stop crime, why are not we working with the landlords, with everybody in the neighborhood to do these things? I'd just like to say that we have good police in Fayetteville, but if we don't do something about this and we don't work on this product, we're going to have what this gentleman talked about, we're going to have a whole bunch of crack houses, we're going to have houses that are being stripped, run down, and nobody's going to do anything, because there's not going to be any landlord that's going to be interested in a property that he's not making any money off, and some of those landlords in those poor areas do not even make $1,000 clear in a year off these properties and these houses that are rent for $300 a month. Thank you, and I would like to say one last thing. This all-American city can do better than this mirage and this Trojan horse that we're calling ramp.
Mr. Mayor, our final speaker will be Ms. Canice McLean.
My name is Canice McLean, and my address is P.O. Box 58375 here in Fayetteville. I'm opposed, I'm opposed to the Rental Action Management Program. I don't believe that as it is written, that is well thought out. It's mean-spirited, and it's divisive. We have not really looked at what this program will cost, nor its effects on our city's business climate, nor the final cost to the renting public. It will be hard on the pocketbooks of our low-end and the renting poor families. Plus, ramp violates property owners' rights. This bill is being sold to us as a way the city will be able to reduce crime and help landlords manage their rental properties. In reality, it's a well-disguised unfair taxation of property owners, and for what? None of us know anything about what or where these monies will be spent. They're not talking about reinvesting them in the landlords. This bill will be hard on owners of single-family homes, because it creates a hostile environment for them to invest in the rental, in rental communities. Ramp portrays tenant-occupied homes as the scourge of their neighborhoods. We have many good tenants, and teaching any group in our diverse community that they are better or would be better off without any group or segment, other segment, that differs from them anyhow, is wrong. This kind of thinking endangers us all. Radical group thinking is seldom right. Ramp paints the picture that we can clean up a neighborhood by removing the blight tenants, but really, it only creates blight in our character by pushing exclusion. Taxation and division are not acceptable trade-offs for our open communication and fairness. We can't turn our backs or deep, or dig deep holes to hide our problems, nor can we finance and grow a city on the backs of any one portion of our community. Fayetteville is blessed. We live and work in a great all-American city. Our crime rates are down, our home prices weren't compromised by overinflation. Let's not corrupt our model city using flash mob vigilante justice. Let's better Fayetteville by passing and using the laws which will draw new business here, by making laws which will create a positive environment for investment in our city, and by making and using the laws to punish those who are actually doing the crimes in the city. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, please do not vote for this prompt, ramp, or whatever it is, tonight. Wait, study, and evaluate all costs, and let's create a plan which will make us all win. Thank you.
Mayor, the public hearing is...
Public hearing is open, sir.
But I waited all, all this time.
I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry.
Well, I'm going to say it anyway.
No, sir, you're not. I'm sorry. Please have a seat. Anybody tonight, we tried to, we did extend the length of hours to an hour. If there's anyone who did not speak tonight, and you were in opposition to the proper ramp program, would you please just stand, just so we have some sense of the numbers? Okay? Thank you very much. If there's anyone that's here tonight that did not speak, that's in support of the proper ramp program, would you stand, please, just to make sure we're heard from everybody?
I didn't get up there.
That's right. Thank you very much.
You did a good job.
All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate everyone being here. Obviously, this is a complicated and emotional issue. I think we had great speakers tonight that helped you all understand, as we're trying to understand, how complicated an issue this is, and I think I can speak on behalf of council. We're not going to rush to anything and do anything until we have worked through every possible angle, and we would encourage you, those of you who've been here tonight, and many of you have offered to be part of finding a good way to solve this problem, we would encourage you to do that, because some of these meetings have not been that well-attended. So if you're part of the stakeholders, and you think you've got some ideas on how we can solve this problem, then we would be more than happy to work with you to find that solution. I am very comfortable in telling you, if you are a slumlord landlord in this town, your days are numbered. We might not have it right now, but we're going to do it. All right, we'll move now, council, to, does anybody, we okay, we're disclosing the public hearing? Thank you so much for coming tonight. We have one more item. If you're leaving, we'll just ask, be as quiet as you can, please. Okay, Ms. McDonnell, thank you for being here, ma'am. We're looking at item 9.4.
Yes, sir, Mayor. According to the 2009 Fayetteville Veterans Administration Medical Center survey, it's estimated there are nearly 500 homeless veterans in our community. There is a clear need for safe, secure, and affordable housing in our community for these homeless veterans. The city council recently considered a request for a special use permit at an Eastwood Avenue property for developing a transitional housing community facility for homeless veterans. A special use permit was denied based on the compatibility of the facility with the surrounding neighborhood. City staff is currently working with RHA Health Services Incorporated to identify property in the city of Fayetteville that would be conducive to the development of housing for the homeless veterans. In the meantime, RHA Health Services asks for a commitment from the city for their development of transitional housing community in Fayetteville. This resolution is intended to articulate the city council's support for transitional housing while keeping in mind that should this item come back to the city council, it most likely will require the most likely will require the council to sit as a quasi-judicial board and consider the special use permit, as well as any changes to our zoning ordinance that may be necessary to construct the project. Therefore, I have tried to draft this ordinance such that it allows the city council to express its support for transitional housing for veterans in our community while also maintaining the necessary impartiality position that will need to be maintained if and when a site is selected and comes before the council for consideration. The resolution is before you. Certainly, if you have any questions, I can try to answer those questions along with other staff members, and/or if council would like to make some changes to the resolution, we're amenable to that as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for Ms. McDonnell? Okay, seeing no questions, what's the council's intent? Mr. Hare?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the resolution in support of developing a transitional housing community facility for homeless veterans.
Second by Mr. Hare. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chris.
Mrs. McDonnell indicated that her staff is trying to define or locate some areas. How far along are we in that endeavor, Mr. Hyman? Have we identified a few parcels that might be given consideration?
Yes, we've looked at surplus property that the city may have, identified whether we had any long-range intended use for the properties, and we have some sites that we have discussed with RHA that they're exploring right now to see if the sites will work for the project. So we do have some that we believe have some pretty good merit.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? Okay, let me ask you a vote, please. Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you for responding, Ms. McDonnell and staff, to that issue. Any other items to come before the council?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. So move. Congratulations, Mr. Fowler.